Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, November 3rd, 2025. It's six o'clock and I'm calling this City Council meeting to order. We have Councilmember Vasquez and Dunning, I think, online. They should be online and hopefully Councilmember Stedman and then in-house. There's Councilmember Mayor Greenstein, the Deputy Mayor, and myself. We're still waiting on Councilmember Cox. Not sure if she's going to be online or if she's going to come late. But with that, if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also want to acknowledge that we, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Tridium Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. And we acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Tridium Medicine Creek and the traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize that and have a responsibility to call attention to the histories of disposition, the forest removal, and the bridge treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. And we recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of 1854. With that, can I get a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda items?
Move to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion passes unanimously. And first up, we have is a proclamation for Native American and Indigenous Heritage Month. Is Councilmember Dunning?
Okay.
Yeah, I can read both parts.
Okay, can you, can you start off, Councilmember Vasquez, and read the first two and then, and then, then, yeah, two for, you got it?
I got two.
Two? Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Vasquez.
Thank you. City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas since time immemorial, Native Americans, Alaskan natives, Native Hawaiians, and Indigenous peoples have built vibrant and diverse cultures, safeguarding land, language, spirit, knowledge, and tradition across generations. And whereas Indigenous people have played a vital role in every stage of our nation's history and have contributed and enhanced the social, political, environmental, and economic well-being of the United States of America and local communities like Lacey. And...
Whereas we acknowledge the Indigenous people who called this land home before the arrival of settlers and have been here since time immemorial. And whereas the city would like to recognize that we are on the lands of the tribal people of the Medicine Creek Treaty and other Indigenous communities, and acknowledge the history of dispossession that allowed for the growth of our community. And...
Whereas the city offers respect to the tribal people of Medicine Creek Treaty and their elders, past, present, and emerging, as well as all Indigenous communities in Thurston County, Washington State, and across the nation. And whereas our community reaffirms its commitment to respect and preserve the traditions and culture and to honor the unique heritage of our first inhabitants.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as Native American Indigenous Heritage Month in the City of Lacey. And I encourage all community members to commemorate this month with appropriate programs and activities. Sign myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this day.
Mr. Cloud, if you want to come up and, first of all, we'll take a quick picture. Say a few words. If you wouldn't mind putting you on the spot?
Sure, Mayor, no problem. No, it's an honor. I want to, I want to thank the, the city, the City Council, members here in the Thurston County area. I, Hauikutaiha from McLeod, represent the tribal council as a government-to-government liaison, former councilmember myself. And, you know, with the friendship or relationship that the city has with the Nisqually Indian Tribe, it's, it's an honor to be up here to represent, you know, my people and, and take this proclamation here back and share it, not only with tribal council, but the community. I want to put out there, of course, you know, we're, we're working in many, many areas there of, of work and economics. And so we are looking forward to next year, which we are hosting the canoe journey of 2026. So we're bringing it back to the territory here, not only to Lacey, but, you know, maybe Olympia. So we're working on the, the parameters and, and the things behind the scene there. But thank you again for this honor here.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming. You guys don't have to stick around if you don't want to. Appreciate it. So next up on our agenda is public comment. And we did have a couple people sign up for public comment. And it looks like Elizabeth? Yeah, come on, come on up to the podium here and please introduce yourself. And you have three minutes for public comment.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Burnett. I'm a resident here in Lacey. I am not in support of the removal of 270 trees for the 2025 Sidewalk Repairs Project. The removal of these established trees is a major oversight of the value that these trees provide. Established trees provide balance to our ecosystem. They affect the water table, our soil integrity, the health of neighboring trees via their root network. Established trees provide habitat for wildlife, which in turn also affects the balance of our local ecosystem. Established trees are monuments within our communities. Communities have their own relationships with these trees. Pardon my emotions. The City of Seattle is conducting sidewalk repairs at this time. They have much more pedestrian traffic than the City of Lacey. They utilize annual spot repairs to repair sidewalks rather than solely relying on ripping whole trees out. This saves the city hundreds of thousands of dollars and protects a vital resource, the established trees. Replacing established trees with young trees is not an equal exchange. It takes young trees decades to provide the value that a mature tree can provide. As I understand it, the tree removal process is halfway done. There is still time to protect living trees. I urge the council to reconsider their stance on tree removal. Consider the impact the death of these trees will have on the ecosystem, the wildlife, and the communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You did great. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? Seeing none, then we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is our 2026 Revenue Source. Troy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Tonight, we're going to conduct the first of three public hearings that are required for our adoption of the 2026 budget. The focus of this hearing should be property tax, which we'll, of course, cover tonight. But we do have a presentation and we'll cover all of our revenues. It's just another opportunity to communicate to the public how much revenues we plan on having next year. Here you have on the screen are the general fund revenue sources. I do want to point out that there is a slight change compared to what the city manager presented two weeks ago. It's actually a reduction, and there's a couple reasons for it, a couple of major impacts. We did get a property tax update in terms of assessed valuation and new construction or refund levy. And then we also have already put, put in the impacts of the lodging tax recommendation. It's coming before you later tonight. Just wanted to give the council the full impact of that. So you can see it's a rather significant decrease. It's about $14.7 million. The majority of that's coming from the all-revenue category. We do have slides that cover each one of these significant variances to follow. Here's basically the same information by graph form. What's interesting for 2026 is this is what I would call a more normal distribution. Last year, we saw the other revenue category taking up a much more significant portion of the general fund revenue. A lot of that is coming from beginning cash and one-time transfers related to capital projects. But when you look at the tax structure within the general funds revenues, that's about 59% when you add up the, the four categories. That's pretty much where we've been historically. 60% is what we've seen over the last 20, 25 years. It dipped below that, like I said, last year. Another interesting thing to point out is permits and fees and the green there at the top right. Those are revenues that are brought in directly from services that we provide to citizens. So when you think about it, in terms of services, we're only getting direct recovery from about 21% of our general fund budget. I'll hand things over to Chelsea to kind of talk through the property tax changes.
Thank you. Good evening. One of the main purposes of this hearing, as Troy mentioned, is to discuss potential increases to the city's property tax levies. As a point of reference, the levy amount includes the addition of new construction, the 1% increase, and the refund levy. The refund levy was actually added since the last budget presentation, which is why the number on the screen is a little different than what you've seen before. The 2026 projected levies are a total of $253,351 more than 2025. The general levy is projected at just over $9.5 million, and the parks bond levy is projected at $364,000. Please note that the general levy amount is expected to change. We anticipate getting updated projections from the county by the end of the month, and so we do think that'll change just a little bit. It typically does. So the $9.5 million levy is made up of general property tax levy, which is $9,272,934. And then we also add in new construction of $51,896. And that new construction increase to assess valuation was only $73.9 million when we got that information from the county. We originally projected it at $175 million. So this signals a lot quicker slowdown than was originally anticipated. The next thing we add, sorry, the next thing we add in is the 1% increase. That is $92,729. This increase is a revenue limit that's based on the previous year levy. And then lastly, we add in refund levy of $107,125. The refund levy is kind of unique. It's made up of a couple different things. So it's, represents adjustments that were made to property assessments based on things like appeals or protests filed by property owners, technical errors, granting of exemptions, and things like that. These refunds were granted for the period of October 1st, 2024, through September 30th of 2025. And these refunds didn't change the legal property tax levy limit. So the city is allowed by RCW to collect those in the following year, which is what we're doing here. Okay, so we're going to look specifically at that new construction amount. This slide's specific to how new construction impacted assessed valuation over time. So new construction is one of the most important increases for property tax because it's not restricted by that 1% limitation. 20 years ago, in 2007, the city experienced a large increase to assessed valuation through additions of new construction. Most of that was residential. The impact of the new construction steadily declined and leveled off through 2016. New construction increased significantly again through 2021 and once more in 2025. Both of those were more multifamily and commercial-based increases. But we do anticipate it to level off pretty sharply in 2026, as you can see from the graph. This next slide is also looking at new construction, but it's specific to the tax we actually collect based on that change in assessed valuation. So you can see that in 2007, we had a significant increase to collections, just like we did to the assessed valuation on the prior slide. However, if you look at '21 and '25, we don't see that same increase that we did on the assessed valuation slide. And that's because our assessed valuation, as it goes up, our levy rate goes down. So a lower levy rate results in less tax collection on those increased assessed valuation dollars. Okay, looking at the levy itself, the levy rate, simply put, levy rates have an inverse relationship with assessed valuation. In the beginning of the graph, levy rates decline due to new construction additions and increasing property values. Between 2010 and 2013, we saw volatility. Most of this was due to that voluntary decrease related to Lacey Fire District III voter-approved annexation. We also experienced declining property values during that time. And then from 2014 to 2016, assessed valuation increased, with the exception of 2024, where we saw just a slight decrease. The 2026 general levy rate is projected to decrease due to increasing property values. Lacey's overall assessed valuation is projected to increase by over $396.3 million. The new construction additions are estimated at $73.9, which we talked about a little bit ago, which means that the existing assessed valuation for Lacey increased $322.4 million, which is about 2.44%. This slide provides a history of levy rates. I'm only going to focus on 2026. The '26 levy rate estimate is currently $0.70 for the general levy and $0.70 for the parks bond levy. 2026 is the last year for our parks bond levy, so we will not have any voter-approved levies after that point. The general levy rate is a little higher than we previously presented due to that refund levy that we talked about before. Okay, this slide is an illustration of what the 2026 tax impact could be for an average home in Lacey. So if a home was valued at $488,000 in 2025, the owner would be paying $356.35 in property taxes allocated specifically to the city. In 2026, we have an average assessed valuation of that 2.44%, which would make that same house the equivalent of $500,000 of assessed valuation. We also have 1/4 of 1 penny levy rate decrease. So the combination of the increase in house value and the decrease in the levy rate equates, equates to that owner paying $363.75. This is an increase of $7.40 year-over-year.
Okay, let's take a look at what we think's going to happen with sales tax next year. Overall, we have just a slight decrease to the three different sales tax projections. We have our general sales tax, and then we have two countywide sales taxes related to public safety. So, you know, looking at the trends that we've seen throughout 2025, it's, it's been a bit of an up-and-down year. We, of course, spent the first half of 2025 in the midst of a 12-month straight decline. We had four months of increases, and then last month, we had just a slight decrease. So these, you know, these projections are obviously conservative in, in nature. But really, this is a, a no-growth sales tax projection for 2026. But really, this is a no-growth sales tax projection for 2026. To give just a little more background in terms of what we've been seeing as far as trends, August of 2025 is the last information that we have on sales tax. We do collect sales tax two months in arrears. So the October receipts actually are based on sales that took place in August. And you could see that the second set of bullets there, the last 12 months ending in August. Overall, retail trade was down 1.2%, construction down 8.6%. And then if you look at a year-to-date, so that just includes basically January through August, very similar trends, retail trades down 1.7%, construction down 4.1%. And these two categories alone make up about 50% of all sales tax. So really, these are our main drivers for sales tax for the city. I'm looking at utility tax. We have an overall increase of $812,000 for next year. You could see the major differences or variances between '26 and '25. Electricity, city-owned utilities are projected to be our two largest increases, just over $300,000 apiece. Natural gas coming in second or third, actually, at about $201,000. And we are again looking at telephone utility tax being reduced. I mean, I think we're just seeing that continued trend of less landline phones in folks' homes. All of these projections are really based on trend analysis, population growth assumptions, as well as known rate increases. So, but it's primarily trend analysis. Of course, when we think of utility tax, while they're stable, they can also be volatile. I mean, highly dependent on weather. Think about natural gas and what happens during the winter, electricity, depending on summertime weather. Last year or into this year, we saw very strong revenues from natural gas and electricity. So cold winters and hot summers have really driven our trend analysis for these two sources. We'll go back to Chelsea to talk about the rest here.
We are projecting BNO tax revenue at $3.77 million, which is $72,907 increase from 2025. This is a slight departure from the trend analysis we presented for sales tax, which is not increasing. Often, the two are thought to have similar tax bases, but BNO tax applies to services where sales tax does not for the most part. We also have a dedicated staff member that does amazing work on the BNO front, and we feel strongly that her efforts have contributed to our positive collection trends. We're projecting admissions tax at $160,000, which is a $10,000 increase from 2025. And there is no change projected to gambling tax. It remains at $543,700. We use trend analysis for all of these assumptions. And also just keep in mind, no revenue enhancement conversations have influenced these projections.
Okay, let's take a look at fees and other revenues. The first major category is service fees. We are projecting about a $1.3 million increase. This is primarily driven by interfund service charges. And when we think about this category, the things, the significant areas within here are engineering services, water resources, street right-of-way maintenance that is performed by our Parks Maintenance Division. So these are all charges that city departments charge other departments for services. Another major category within other revenues is interest and investment income. We're projecting just under $1.2 million for 2026. This is a decrease of about $122,000. We are in an environment of declining interest rates. That's really the driver here. We're, I think, between 3.75% and 4% now at the Federal Reserve rate. I think the neutral rate is, historically, is around 3. I'm not sure what our target is now, but it's somewhere between at 3 and 3.5%. And I think many economists believe that's where we'll get to, that range by the end of 2026. So certainly expect that declining environment to continue throughout the year.
Isn't that really the bigger issue there is that we have less dollars to invest than we have? Because we put so much out for the police station?
Yeah, that impact wasn't quite as significant in '26 as this year. So we had moved a lot of cash for the police station.
In '24?
Not quite as much in 2026 and '25. The major transfer that we had was for the first phase of Kewyo Park. But yes, that stuff may have an impact, smaller principle as well. Other revenues, we have, this is our most significant decrease. This is really what's driving the overall decrease for the general fund. We're projecting about a $17 million decrease in this broad area. The most significant is that beginning cash and use of reserves. We have a $15.7 million decrease. And as I mentioned, the majority of that is from Great Kewyo Park. We used $6 million for that development. We also have $3 million for a regional permanent supportive housing project and about $1.3 million for the design of the college and 7th Roundabout. Also impacting this area are transfers. Anytime we transfer in between funds, that is counted as our revenue. In 2026, we are projecting this to be about $1.1 million less. The two significant changes that occurred in 2025 are $316,000 for the RAC complex operations and maintenance. Again, we talked earlier that we have accommodated for the LTAC or the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendations already. And then we have an $845,000 decrease to capital equipment transfers. And really, that's just an indication that we are seeing, projecting now, a lot less activity in terms of capital equipment investments and replacements. And we'll go back to Chelsea.
Okay, use of reserves. The 2026 current expense fund budget is being balanced by utilizing $4.77 million worth of reserves. $657,400 of that is related to economic development, as kind of notated there on the slide. $2.88 million is the use of the Budget Policy Implementation Reserve. This number is smaller than what's been previously reported, just due to what Troy mentioned as far as the property tax and the lodging tax considerations. Last week, we discussed that sometimes operational items are embedded into our use of reserves. This year is no exception. In the list there, you can see rapid response team, body and fleet cameras, and energy conservation costs. Those are all being funded by reserves, and ideally, these types of items would have ongoing revenue streams to pull from. The 2026 community building funds also is using reserves. It's being balanced through $183,777. All of these reserves are being used for repair or equipment replacement. The Capital Equipment Fund also is using reserves in the amount of $227,054. These reserves are being used for equipment replacement due to shortfalls in the equipment rental reserve and purchase of new equipment associated with Kewyo Park. This is also in addition to new Kewyo Park equipment of roughly $288,000 that we included in the 2025 budget amendment. So we've added some equipment for that park when it comes online, so.
Okay, so to wrap up our general fund revenue projections, before we move on to some of the other funds, I just want to kind of close out the general fund with some general observations and considerations. You know, Chelsea mentioned the property tax and new construction number, down pretty drastically from last year, just under $74 million for 2026 compared to $288 million in 2025. So, you know, we talked about the importance and the impact that has on our budget. So clearly something we need to keep an eye on as we go forward. You know, Chelsea also mentioned that we used $175 million in new construction at the beginning of all this process. So a little bit of a shock to the system when we got those first numbers from the county.
So I guess I'll let you finish. I'll ask questions at the end, sorry.
Okay, no problem. I mentioned that the 2026 budget is pretty much a no-growth situation for sales tax. We'll obviously continue to keep a very close eye on this as we continue through the rest of this year and early into 2026, as this is really our best indicator for the local economy. So far through October, we have overall seen lower development revenues. And when we think about future development, you know, that's really where our growth is coming from, has significant impacts on property tax. As we've discussed, we get sales tax from the construction that occurs. We typically see growth from utility tax from these early kind of insights as to what's happening in the economy. So so far, it's a little bit mixed, but mostly down. So through October, building permits are about $126,000 higher through October than last year. And plan check fees are down about $368,000. So building permits, looking at towards year-end, I think we're going to exceed budget. We had projected $1 million for permit fee revenues for 2025. Could hit as high as 1.2 million, so a little bit higher than that. We're at $990,000 right now, so we're pretty sure to hit projections there. Plan check fees, that's a completely different situation. We're about 50% of where we were last year so far through October. We don't anticipate recovering and actually meeting budget on that source. So like I said, a little bit of a mixed message in terms of future development.
Can you explain where each one of those are at in the processes? You know, because to have the permit fees up and exceed budget, but the plan check down considerably, it's like I'm trying to reconcile where it's being missed.
Yeah, that's a great question. So building permit fees, that's when construction is about to begin, essentially. So a developer will come in, pull the permit, and then construction basically starts. Plan check fees is much earlier in the process. A lot can change in between that and the actual drawing of the permit. Sometimes that activity doesn't actually result in a permit, so it's a lot more cloudy. But yeah, we're definitely seeing a reduction in plan check fees. Also, I'll mention that about $90,000 of that number is a refund. So, you know, keep that in mind, too. So we're probably closer to that $280,000 or so range in terms of actual activity decrease. But yeah, very different stages throughout the development process. We talked about lower interest rates. Again, just as a reminder, we are projecting less revenue there. It's about 9.4% lower than what we had projected for 2025. And then finally, you know, Chelsea mentioned that we're using about $2.9 million in reserves. Of course, we have a three-pronged approach to help bridge this gap. We're basically finishing year one of a two-year plan, so more to come on that. We are taking actions as we speak. You know, the council's, of course, well aware of the discussions that have happened on the revenue enhancement side. We've talked about expenditures and service levels. And then I believe in early December, the council will be getting its first presentation on the economic development strategy. So we look forward to that. So those are the three different prongs in terms of our approach to bridging this gap. And next, we'll move on to transportation with Chelsea.
Okay, so the Transportation Benefit District is one of our transportation revenue sources. The district collects 2/10 of 1% of sales tax, which is projected at $3.7 million in 2026. This is a special funding mechanism that took effect in July of 2017, and it supports the preservation of streets and sidewalks. Another revenue source is the motor vehicle fuel tax. This is a state-shared revenue projected at $1.1 million in 2026. Of the total, 68.14% goes towards operations and maintenance, and 31.86% goes towards capital.
Can you remind me what the TBDD was in 2025? And are we going to match that? Because it should follow exactly what sales tax is, right?
It does. I think it's just slightly down from 2025.
Which would make sense because it has to follow the same sales tax.
Well, yeah, I won't disagree with you. There are anomalies in the numbers. I've noticed that in the public safety as well.
Really?
Yeah.
It should be the exact same. How is it not the exact same number?
I'm not sure. So 2025's budget was $3.75 million. So that's a budgeted number. 2024, we actually collected $3.796. So, I mean, we're talking $10,000 or so in difference. So pretty flat-lined.
Thank you.
Okay, so real estate excise tax or REIT. In 2025, we created a new capital project revenue fund specifically for reseating in REIT dollars. The first priority of the revenue is payment towards the new police station bond. The bond payment is expected to be around $1.3 million per year. The total projected REIT collections for 2026 are just under $2.4 million. Okay, so this is a 20-year history of REIT collections. REIT is a relatively volatile source for the city. It's impacted by the value and volume of all real estate transactions. 2015, 2016 timeframe is the last time we've seen REIT as low as we are projecting it for 2026. The city experienced healthy amounts of REIT revenue in the years between, which allowed for greater flexibility, opportunity to grow, and build up one-time reserves. Out of those one-time reserves, we were able to fund $18 million of the new police station and training center.
REIT appears to have an inverse relationship with interest rates slightly. And so with, I mean, I don't know how many houses are going to sell if the Fed gives us another quarter or half. Nobody can say that. But it looks like on that last slide, as the rate came down in 2020, 2021, obviously, you know, the REIT just continued to rise, which was, you know, really, really good. And we were able to take those dollars, invest them, you know, make some interest money on them. But as rates start to come down, do you project that maybe our REIT could possibly go up a little bit?
It's possible. I mean, we're really talking about the overall market, so I think cost and valuation has a lot to do with that, too. But yeah, certainly interest rates is a driver of volume. So this is really just based on the dollar value of the sales that have happened in our jurisdiction. So there's a lot of different drivers to that. But yeah, interest rate is certainly one of those. Okay, we're almost through. So we'll kind of finish up with utility rates. We did talk about this last week, but for the benefit of the public, these are a combination of adopted 2026 utility rates as well as a proposed for stormwater. So we have a adopted rate for water of a 5.25% increase. For sewer is also adopted by the council. That's a 9.5% increase. Stormwater, the proposed increase is 4.5%. And then the Lacey Olympia Tomata Thurston County Wastewater Alliance, their board has adopted a 3% rate increase. And you could see here the monthly impacts to a typical residential account. As promised, I do want to show the council and the public the, kind of the side-by-side comparison of the last water comp plan. Its assumptions are both expenditures or revenues compared to what actually happened through the period. So the first year of that comp plan was 2021. And you could see this through 2025. The 2025 columns there are budgeted numbers. So I really focused my comments on 2021. So I really focused my comments on two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-four. Because that's, you know, what we, the last final year that we have actual numbers. So in terms of expenditures, if you look at the, you could see that in every year except for two thousand twenty-one, we exceeded the amount that was projected to be spent. The cumulative amount is about three point six million. So we spent three point six million more than what the comp plan had anticipated. And to really kind of drill down on the, the details of that, it's really coming from these three categories. Salary and benefits, we spent eight hundred thousand more through that four-year period than the comp plan had projected. Water meter supplies, we spent about two point five million more. That's a combination between the, the data sending units as well as the meters themselves. Of course, I think the council's well informed in terms of the condition of our system, in terms of that replacement. I will point out that this comp plan did assume that we would spend about seven point four million dollars on this project. It was actually a capital project where this is actually coming in through the maintenance side. And all of these numbers are on the maintenance side. So there's, there's no capital improvement program numbers in here. So, but bottom line, what I'm trying to say is the, the, the revenue rate projections that period actually did include this meter project. And then the final area that we saw a significant difference was in merchant and billing services, an increase of one point three million. What's really makes up this category are merchant service fees. So the, the discount rate that we pay on credit card payments. So we pay somewhere in the neighborhood of three percent to our, to our merchant vendor on every credit card payment that's made. So we, that's a direct outflow of monies. And as well as actually the printing of bills, sending out, laying notices and that sort of thing with our contract with the state. So pretty significant increase there. So, you know, these are the three categories that really make up that increase compared to the, to the comp plan. On the revenue side, so same thing, we're really focusing on two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-four. Again, this is just the operations side of the utility. So for that four-year period, we collected about seven point six million more in revenues than what was projected in the comp plan. So when you look at revenues versus expenditures, we collected about three million more. Or we collected, the net of that is three million dollars more in available funds to help operate our water utility as well as to pay for future capital. So again, really looking at the details of why revenues were higher than the comp plan. The vast majority of that's coming from water sales, about five point seven million more than what was projected in the comp plan. And then also interest earnings, about one point four million dollars higher. The comp plan basically projected next to zero in terms of interest income. I think it was about fifty-seven thousand throughout this period. So if you think about where interest rates were back in two thousand twenty, we went from an overnight rate of like five percent down to zero and I think two Federal Reserve meetings. So we were basically earning point zero nine percent on our money, I think is where we bottomed out. And that's why we saw a projection of right around fifty thousand or so for interest earnings. And of course, what actually happened in reality was much different. So, you know, I hope that gives the council a little more information in terms of what's happened versus what we thought might happen in terms of our consultant-driven study. But it's good news really. We haven't, we've had to borrow less money than, than anticipated, so we saved quite a bit in interest as far as that goes. And if we think about what's going to happen in the next round of comp plan and revenue requirement, that's just gonna, it's just really gonna pay forward and that'll buy down future rates.
You're not giving me a lot of faith in comp plans.
Well, I'm pretty famous telling our Public Works friends that the comp plan's outdated like three months after it's adopted because it's like the budget, it's a living document. But, you know, we use, we're very conservative. We want to make sure that our revenues are going to cover those expenditures. So we would hate to be in a situation where we weren't able to operate the utility but, and, and pay for future capital. But it's a snapshot in time from five years ago is really what we're looking at.
They were, they were three million off on, on what our costs were gonna be. And they were seven million off on, on what are we gonna collect? I mean, that's not a great track record right there for a comp plan.
Yeah, if you have a better crystal ball, please send it forward.
I think, but I think, I think staff could do probably just as good a job with trying to come up with that number and, and save us all that cost on the comp plan.
Yeah, there's, you know, all of this is high-level estimates at the time it's put in. And there are considerable number of variables that are, have to be dealt with here. So, yeah, I mean, this comp plan is as accurate as about any comp plan you'll find in any city. It's just the nature of the beast. And, yeah, I mean, if everything was static, if we were just in a factory building pianos, we'd nail it a hundred percent. But, you know, we're, we're installing infrastructure in areas with, yeah, underground utilities that aren't all known, aren't all shown. And, yeah, considerable number of variables. So, so this is, these are good comp plans. There's just a lot of variables that can't be predicted.
Okay, so in terms of next steps, the council is scheduled to consider two actions on property tax. Again, that's the main reason that we're conducting tonight's public hearing. So you'll have a, a resolution that will authorize the one percent increase. In terms of comparison to inflation, the inflation factor that we use in terms of that limiting factor is the implicit price deflator. And that inflation number is two point four-four percent. Also for consideration for the council will be the actual ordinance that will set both the general property tax levy as well as the voter-approved levy. So again, you'll see those two weeks from tomorrow. And we'll turn this over to the council for any further questions. But again, tonight's purpose is to open a public hearing so the public can comment on anything that it's heard tonight in terms of revenues.
First thing I'm gonna do is gonna open up this public hearing for our two thousand twenty-six revenue sources. Is there anyone wishing to address the council on our revenue sources? See none? Council, do you have any questions? So, Council Mayor Beskows.
Yeah, I mean, I think you probably covered it, but I'm just amazed that we had estimated a hundred and seventy-five million dollars in increased revenue or increased, excuse me, property valuation from new construction. And that it was in fact seventy-three million instead of a hundred and seventy-five million. I'm assuming that the budget that was presented earlier also kind of assumed based on that projection of a hundred and seventy-five million instead of seventy-three. Did we have to make any adjustments? Like, are we looking at more of a deficit because that anticipated increased valuation is so different?
No, that's a, that's a good observation, but we did catch that change prior to going to the print of the proposed budget. So it, it was accounted for. In terms of dollar impact, that was about a seventy thousand dollar reduction to our product, projection. And really we balance that through the projection, projected use of the, the budget policy implementation reserve.
Yeah, I mean, the change from valuation estimate to actual valuation sounds big. But if the impact is only seventy thousand dollars for us, it's, that's not that big for us. Thank you.
So I, I have a, a theory. I, I don't think we're off that much. Right, it's up to the assessor's office to take in all the new construction and come up with these valuations. This was the, the latest we've ever gotten this number. And the truth of the matter is, is the assessor's office is, is completely understaffed right now. And so when the assessor is this understaffed and they are having to process all these new, new constructions, they haven't, weren't able to get through them all. At some point, the assessor had to say, stop, right? We have to give out this number. And I have a feeling there's quite a bit of a backlog sitting in the assessor's office that hasn't been assessed for this year because this comes from way out of right field. Not, and none of our information really backs this number up compared to what we know is in the pipeline, the activity that we're seeing that's happening in our community. I mean, we still know even with our short-term permits that are about ready to go to construction, we're, we're met where we're at, what we thought we were gonna be at, right? We're actually a little over budget, can be over budget. And so that's going on the ground right now. Problem is the assessor's not being able to get around to actually go and assign that actual number. And so what I think's gonna happen is next year, well, it depends on if the assessor's office will ever get caught up or not. Because he's, they're in a perpetual state of being understaffed and, and it's affecting everything we're doing. And this is why I had conversations with the, the county commissioner saying, hey, not, not all of what's going on is, should be treated equally. That you're having an impact here on the city of Lacey when the assessor can't do their job, right? And so please don't make any additional cuts there because it's affecting us. Now, in the scheme of things, and that's why property taxes are so confusing, you can be off by this much and it's only seventy thousand dollars. When you say only seventy thousand dollars, it's still seventy thousand dollars. And that's why you don't really feel that impact. And, and this is what used to happen in Thurston County for a long time. They were always behind, always behind. And for many years they had gotten caught up. And, and it actually helps all of our budgets when that number is as accurate as possible. But that number is not accurate. There's no way that number's accurate because we know at some point the assessor said we had to stop and just give you a number. And so I don't think it's this dire. I think the assessor's office is just way understaffed and hasn't gotten around to collecting all this test value. And we're gonna see that get caught back up depending on what happens in the assessor's office in, in two thousand twenty-six is, is my, my feeling here. Because it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. And that's why we, we're so, we're caught off guard because it, it still, it still doesn't make sense when I see it right now. And I, so I think it's more clerical than anything. Although, you know, I know we have slowed down. There's no doubt we have slowed down, but look at how many multifamily homes are still in the pipeline. How many single-family homes are in the pipeline? We know it's in the pipeline. We've, we've seen it's in the pipeline and that's not, that, that number, that hasn't changed. And so, yes, we've slowed down, but not, not to this degree. There's just no way. The assessor's office just needs to get that once it's collected and, you know, it goes through the whole process. The, the assessor doesn't put on the rolls that basically vary in. And so I, I, I think that's what's going on here. We haven't seen, we're not, it didn't drop this much, it just hasn't been reported yet.
And we're probably not gonna know until after Q one.
Yeah, we won't know until, you know.
So I tried to calculate the difference between the seventy-three and the two hundred and forty-four million, I think is what it was, and see where that was gonna put us at, you know, per thousand. You got to it quicker than I did at seventy. But I, I also looked at, when I see the adopted resolution and, you know, the assumption that we're gonna adopt it, which we might, at one percent. And, and you look at the one percent and you think about your tax bill and that could possibly be scary. But just for the public's information, the Lacey, that only affects the Lacey portion of the property tax bill period only. So I did the calculations on my primary residence. And the one percent for me would equal thirty-nine point seven cents per month. And that is what we, the resolution that we may take later in the year. So, so it's not a big, huge, scary number at one percent. It, it really is just one percent of Lacey's portion. And in previous years, that number, I think on, I calculated on a different property was twenty-five cents a month. The property I live in now, it's thirty-nine cents a month. So it's not a huge detrimental portion, so nothing to fear there. But I, I appreciate you bringing all the numbers and, and kind of giving us the scary view. And I, I have a feeling that as in previous years, in thirty days from now, you'll have a slightly different picture for us. Hopefully something a little more positive.
Let's hope so. Does anyone have any other questions? But in, in years past, we've, we've calculated what that one percent has done on average household. I think it's not that, do you have that information?
It is about three dollars and forty-five cents for an average house of five hundred thousand.
Okay.
That's for a year, three forty-five for the year.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight cents.
For the year, yeah, for the year, yeah.
Twenty-eight cents a month.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions once more time from the public? Then I'm gonna close this, uh, public hearing on our two thousand twenty-six revenue sources. Thanks, okay. Now let's go on to our next agenda item, which is resolutions. The ULD District twenty-five, Tommy Park Estates Sewer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Vince McGowan. I'm the Water Resources Manager for the Public Works Department. And I'm here tonight recommending that council adopt a resolution setting December second as the date for the final assessment hearing for the Tommy Park Estates Utility Local Improvement District. The ULD, U L I D number twenty-five was formed in February of two thousand twenty-two to replace a failing large onsite septic system and bring sewer service to the neighborhood. The failing system was contributing pollution in groundwater and Eagle Creek. Council pledged two million dollars towards the project costs. And Lot also waived half of their capacity development charges to support the project. We completed construction of this project this summer. So all parcels in the neighborhood, which is the area outlined in red on this map, are now plumbed to city sewer lines and the failing system has been abandoned. So shown here are the final costs for the project, which totaled two million, two hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. And the city's contribution, with the city's contribution, the net cost to individual parcel owners is six thousand and eighty-three dollars per equivalent residential unit. This cost is well below the estimate at the formation hearing. And there are forty-eight total equivalent residential units, forty-seven single-family homes and one duplex.
Do you have the original estimate number? Or it, it may not be part of your presentation. If you don't have it, you don't, don't dig it up. But it was, it's just something in my head and I was just kind of like wandering.
Yeah. I have a lot of other things, but I don't believe I have the original estimate.
We can get to that offline.
Okay.
In the staff report says the estimated cost was three million.
So if you adopt the resolution tonight, we will issue public notices of the hearing date and notify all the property owners of the final amount, the hearing date and the process for providing testimony at the hearing. And with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Can I get a motion, please?
I would move that we adopt a resolution fixing the hearing date of December second, two thousand twenty-five to consider the final assessment roll call for ULD number twenty-five, Tommy Park Estates.
Second.
It's been moving second, any discussion? No, number, obviously this, this happened, we, the council made this decision, you know, quite a bit ago. And, and it was, it was hard for me to remember how much we had, actually had pledged for it. For some reason I had in my mind that we had pledged a million dollars, but obviously we pledged two million. But I also remembered at the time remarking that that was a lot of money for us to pledge for, you know, a community that was outside the city, city of Lacey. And that it was early in the process and we had no idea what the final costs were gonna be. And, you know, recommended that we be the last dollars in since it was such unknown at the time. I think if we have had this, you know, it's so hard to make these estimates. But the fact that in this circumstance, we're giving two million out of the two mil, you know, and the, the residents are only having to pay two hundred and eighteen thousand wherever they're, it, it really doesn't feel right. But we've already made this pledge and so there's nothing. feel right. But we've already made this pledge, and so there's nothing we can do at this point, except in the future, I hope this does serve somewhat of a lesson for future councils to think about on putting some sort of policy around setting what the individual price should be for an average homeowner, instead of doing it this way. Because, you know, if this was in an area that was, for example, extremely low income, or, you know, something along those lines, I would feel a lot better about pledging those many dollars to a project. But, you know, that didn't happen in this circumstance. And it feels like the residents are getting a heck of a deal here, where, anyway, I'll leave that there. I think we should just have, you know, should think about this a little bit harder going forward, about when we pledge this, these dollar amounts, you know, to projects like this.
I think at the time, we were doing two-thirds, as opposed to, and I think maybe going with that percentage probably would have been a better way for us to go. Because if I remember right, each one of these lots were going to be, have their own cost of 21 to $24,000, somewhere in that ballpark. But I think what happens when the, when the, when the final bid came in, it was much lower. We'd already pledged and we were committed. So then these guys got a huge break. And you're right, going forward, we probably should look at something more of a percentage as opposed to an actual dollar amount.
Yeah. That's just my two cents. Is there any other question, any other conversation? Then it's been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution fixing a hearing date of December 2nd, 2025, to consider the final assessment roll for the ULID 25. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And that motion unanimously carries. Thank you.
Like the bullet.
So, next up, I do have, under the mayor's report, I do have two recommendations. We had two openings for our historic commission, and we had two applicants that were interviewed. And it will be my recommendation, I'll take it as one recommendation, that we appoint both Gary Montgomery and David Shipley to the historic commission to serve their first term.
Second.
It's moving seconded. Is there any discussion? Looks like Gary and David are both here. You want to come up and introduce yourselves to the council?
Well, my name is Dave Shipley, and it's a real honor to be appointed to the Lacey Historic Commission. It's a great journey that I started a long time ago. I have been on the Thurston County Historic Commission, was chairman for 28 years. I was on the Olympia Heritage Commission, I think, six years. And I don't know if the Lacey council knows this, but I'm still on the Tom Water Historic Commission, and I've been chair of that one for about 18 years. So I'm looking forward to putting in, oh, at least 20 more years on the Lacey Historic Commission. What I'm really looking forward to is learning more about Lacey and preserving the history, educating the people, putting more sites on registers and that type of thing. The job of historic preservation is a fantastic job, and it's an honor for me to serve the community. So thank you.
Thank you. It's music to my ears.
Hi, I'm Gary Montgomery. I have a not-quite-so sterling record in historic preservation interpretation, but brief career as a contract archaeologist, internship with the Historic Preservation Training Center and National Park Service. So I've been there a little bit. And as a resident of Lacey, I look forward to serving on the board and serving my community.
Thank you. In both these circumstances, we have a position set aside for actually experts in the field, and they would both qualify for that. They don't have to, but in the circumstances, they would both qualify under that criteria. So thank you for your application, and thank you for your willingness to serve the city of Lacey and care about our history and our heritage. We really appreciate it. Okay, there's a motion and second. Is there any other? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion to appoint Gary and David to their first term on the historic commission, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you. Okay, city manager's report.
Well, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight on the city manager's report, I'm going to invite Vince McGowan, backup, our Water Resources Manager, to give a quick overview on an opportunity to enter into agreement with Lot to do a reclaim water Class A plus demonstration project.
All right. Good evening. So I'm here tonight recommending that your authorization for the city manager to enter an interlocal agreement with Lot to support a reclaimed water Class A plus potable reuse demonstration project, including a commitment of $50,000 towards the project. Council received notice of this project with Lot's state of the utility presentation on June 24th of this year. And that same evening, the Water Resources staff presented on the city's reclaimed water plan, which also discusses Class A plus reclaimed water and direct potable reuse as a potential future use of reclaimed water. So the project is well underway, and we're on track to produce Class A plus reclaimed water next fall. See the schedule there. We're working closely with state regulators to ensure public health and safety. We've already screened the source water for hundreds of chemicals, which have been identified by the Department of Health and the State Board of Health, and narrowed that list down to 36 chemicals that will be extensively monitored throughout the rest of the project. We're testing two technologies here. One is reverse osmosis, which is basically a very small filter capable of removing nearly everything except the hydrogen and oxygen molecules in the water. The other system is granular activated carbon, which is commonly used in things like water pitcher filters, refrigerator filters to remove harmful chemicals. In this project, the filters will be followed by the final disinfection step. And all Lot partners are contributing to this effort. Our next steps involve ramping up communication efforts and also educating our drinking water operators on the process. So with that, if you have any questions, happy to.
Go ahead.
Just one. So is the idea here to compare the two different technologies to see which is more effective, or?
Yes, it is. So reclaim water nationwide, on the west coast and southwest, reverse osmosis is commonly used. But if you go to the east, granular activated carbon is used quite a bit. They both have their pros and cons, so we're looking to see the performance out of each. Both do a very good job of removing all the harmful chemicals. They have some trade-offs where with the granular activated carbon, that absorbs a lot of the chemicals. So then you have to dispose of that. But with reverse osmosis, you have a lot of reject water. So you have to backflush those filters, and then you have a large volume of highly polluted water that you have to deal with separately. So there are pros and cons, and I'm really happy that Lot is looking at both treatment drains.
Are they similar in cost?
They are similar in capital costs, operating costs. Reverse osmosis requires a little bit more energy cost because you have to operate under pressure. So that's another thing that will be monitored throughout the project.
So is that, is that, say we go through this whole process, and you say reverse osmosis is the preferred alternative after doing this project. Is then the next step to incorporate that? Or is this just?
Just a study.
Just a study? Or is there a real intent behind trying to figure out if we can do this and what the costs will, you know, are we heading this direction? And we're just trying to figure out which one we're going to do, or?
You know, I believe there is real intent behind this. You know, we.
Because it seems like a lot of money if there's not intent.
Yeah, certainly. There's intent. I've been part of this project in a prior role. And from the very beginning, you know, all of, all the jurisdictions are looking at running out of water rights eventually. And there's, there's very little new water in the water rights space. And where reclaimed water provides that opportunity to mitigate some of our water rights, where we can continue to draw water. So I think that, also in the regulatory space, to have the State Board of Health and the Department of Health active in this project and Department of Ecology, that's very encouraging. They're going to need to be bought in, in order to approve new technologies. So I do think it's the future. How far in the future, how soon, that's hard to tell, but it's definitely investing in the.
It just feels like for a long time, we've been told, like, this is the worst-case scenario if we have to go this because it's so expensive. And yet now we're studying if we can go here or not. And so, you know, if it, if it's going to be so expensive, prohibitively expensive, then it doesn't seem, you know, I'm just not sure where, if we're right in timing and all of this. But, you know, I'm not an expert. So Councilmember Vasquez, do you have a question?
I mean, more just to comment and response. I think it's, to me, it seems worthwhile to invest in exploring this technology, like, fit-tested and make sure that it will work, even though it's expensive now. Because naturally, usually, technology gets less expensive over time. And it's a long time until we're going to need this. But it would be better to know that it works and have it kind of figured out and have it tested and have the research to support using this technology in the future when it becomes more relevant. And hopefully by then, kind of like, you know, different fuel type for cars and buses, it will become more affordable over time as we get better at the tech.
We are benefiting from more arid regions that have broken a lot of ground and refined this technology quite a bit. So bringing that here, having the demonstration in-state with our regulators, really builds on advancements that others have made around the country. And, you know, that we're heading in that direction. They're just ahead of us on the water scarcity.
I think Scott Agar has something to add, too.
So, yeah, it is, it is an expensive technology, but it is the future. Because there will not be any more significant water rights. You know, as Vince mentioned, the Schuets Basin is closed, and the Squali Basin is closed. And they're closed for good reasons, for environmental reasons. And the groundwater that we draw, we know from, you know, our past, impacts surface waters. So we won't be able to mitigate impacts from drawing more groundwater. We won't be able to mitigate the impacts to surface water, which means we won't get more water rights. So, you know, it's like, what's the value of something when you can't get it? It goes up. But this is the future. It's a long-term process, and now is the right time to start looking into this, so.
Appreciate it. Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
Yeah, sure.
I'll authorize that. I would move that we authorize the city manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with Lot to support a reclaimed water Class A plus potable reuse demonstration project.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. It's been moved and seconded to authorize city manager to enter into this interlocal agreement. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I have a couple more items I just want to report out. I have a couple of routine interlocal agreements that I have signed, that I want to make sure council is aware of. As council knows, routine interlocal, I have the authority to sign routine ILAs or contracts. Those are contracts that are $25,000 or less in value, or are extensions of existing contracts. One is a little bit late in reporting now. It is an amendment to an interlocal agreement we had with Thurston County for joint staffing of the Lacey Veteran Services Hub. As you recall, as we did the transition from our contract with a contracted employee into bringing an in-house employee to manage the facility, we had a gap of time where we needed to have joint staffing between the City Lacey staff and county staff to operate and manage the Veteran Services Hub. That, the original contract was entered in February, and it was set to expire on March 30. I went ahead and extended that contract through June 30 to continue that because of the timing of recruitment of our new Veteran Services Coordinator position. And I just want to say, even though this is late in reporting out, I do want to say it's been a great partnership with the county, with their support, to make this transition being seamless, and continue those services to our veterans during this time. So that was one item, contract I wanted to report out. And another one's a little bit more recent. Back in August, back in August, I entered in a contract with, interagency agreement with the State of Washington Department of Enterprise Services to contract for some training on plain language. And this contract was for an amount of $2,575. I signed this contract back on August 4th for training for city staff in September. And for plain language training, that is intended to provide training and skills to communicate information in a more clearly, concisely, and effectively way, so that readers can quickly understand and comprehend the information that we're putting out to the public, as well as internal. So we had, I don't know the number, but we had a large majority of our, our staff, especially those that are writing public documents, go through that plain talk training, and we're continuing to reinforce that training with information being pushed out to the organization. So I wanted council to be aware of those two interlocal agreements. I signed that a routine in nature and be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Questions?
So we have one county employee at the Veteran Services Hub, performing duties until June?
Till last June.
This past June.
Yep. So we now have Brian Wannanen, who's now hired and placed for Veteran Service Coordinator, and he hit the ground running. But this was to bridge the service and staffing until we had Brian on board.
So now it's fully Lacey staff?
It's fully Lacey staff.
Okay.
But still have contact with county service providers and also general nonprofit supervisors there. So still coordination with the county staff.
Okay. Okay. Now we're going to council reports. I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor?
I have one quick report. It's kind of a report that I'm going to have to follow up on in a week or two. So the EDC met on October 22. And this was really mainly a budgetary report, or should I say a budgetary meeting? As you guys know, a lot of federal dollars have ceased to flow. And this has caused the EDC to have to reduce or remove some of the services that were, that were, hit the ground or created when federal funds were a little more free-flowing. So with, since the beginning of this year, we've kind of had some, some federal cuts and a couple state cuts, which have caused us to really have to take a look and see what's going to stay and what's going to go. So by the end of the year, we should have a pretty clear picture of which programs will make it and which programs will not. There are several that we don't want to see go, that may have to go, including WCWB, some of the quick startup programs, maybe a scale-up program, things that were implemented to help businesses to grow. Some of the other things, like the Real Estate Forum and the Alliance, and some of the revenue-producing programs have a much better chance of making it through the cuts. But as we get closer to the end of the year, I'll be able to report out a little bit more in-depth on the, what will, what will stay and what will go. One of the positive things that came out of this meeting is that Lacey Makerspace is doing a whole lot better than, than we thought. And then, it's really operating really well, possibly even, maybe even have another day in the week, Q2 maybe. You know, more to come on that. And so that's, that's my report.
No report this evening.
Councilmember Vasquez?
No reports of meetings that have recently happened, but we've got the Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting coming up on Friday. And this again is the meeting where we're going to be taking final action on the finalists for the executive director position. We will be doing interviews with the finalists in executive session on Friday. There's also an open opportunity to meet the finalist candidates, candidates on November 6th, that Thursday evening over at the port. So if anyone wants details, that's open. So that's what I've got.
So. So Council, as you can tell, there's only four of us here. Normally, we'd be, we'd be breaking into a work session to talk about some, the water replacement project, which is something that's been ongoing, and our lodging tax funding recommendations. It's my recommendation with Council's approval that we wait till we have a normal full council for, for those discussions. Neither of them are dire to pass right now. We have until the end of the budget to pass, to talk about the lodging tax funding recommendations. And the water replacement's been sort of an ongoing. We wanted a full check-in with the council and we have a bare majority here. And I, so I just don't think it's, I would prefer to have a full council here to talk about those two. I just, is, want to know where council's at.
Yeah, go ahead.
I completely agree. As long as we have enough time and there's another meeting where we have time in that meeting to bring, to deal with the, particularly the LTAC, because that is time-sensitive to the budget.
We have, of course, next week, we won't have a normal council meeting or work session because we'll have the joint meeting with the school board. And then, of course, the remaining work session in November does have a full list of topics as well as the council meetings, but we may have to squeeze it in and break from a council meeting into a work session. It may be a longer night.
We're used to that. We've had a few of them lately.
Yeah, we have. I just...
Especially during budget season.
Especially when it comes to, this will be the first time of us really kind of talking about LTAC and all that. I want, I'd like our full council there. Yeah, so.
So does that, does that put us into the December 2nd kind of area?
Probably.
More than, more than likely, December 2nd, I might be able to, I'll work with the mayor about scheduling because there are some, the November 18th council meeting is a fairly large agenda, but we could probably add on to that as well and break that into work session.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is December 2nd when we're approving the budget?
No.
No, that's scheduled for December 16th.
16th, last meeting of the year, yeah. Okay. With, with that, with the consent of the council, we've reached the end of our regularly scheduled meeting. And so without objection, I will call this meeting adjourned. If you're listening to this and you haven't voted yet...
Please vote.
Please vote. Do your research, ask questions, and please vote by tomorrow. This is obviously a special session, a special council meeting today. Normally, we'd be meeting on Tuesdays, but tomorrow is our election day. And so we, we switched that. That's why we're meeting on Monday. But with that, you keep it classy, Lacy. You go and vote. I'll call this meeting adjourned.